Good afternoon, everyone who's joined us on Zoom. This is Mike Newmark, the Administrative Law Judge for the PSC. We are going to get started at 2:00 o'clock. I'll make some announcements about the process. But just so you know, we're taking public comments on the grid forward transmission line project. And to make a comment, you'll need to unmute your microphone and turn your camera on. Looks like we have one person that don't see that you have a microphone. So just want to give you Jerry. I'm not sure if you have a mic. But if you do want to comment, you'll need to, at least we'll need to hear you for sure. And seeing you is preferred as well. So, so thanks. We'll get started too. Just stay tuned for some further announcements before that. Hey, everyone. Just want to briefly interrupt you guys. We're going to get started at 2:00 o'clock, but I want to let you know I forgot the microphones that I usually use when we do these hearings. So I apologize. We're just going to have to speak up when we're talking. But if you do want to take the time now just to move up to the front, if you're having trouble hearing me. I don't, if someone's giving a comment, they're probably not going to be shouting like this. I hope they're not going to be shouting. But so you want to move up if you're having trouble hearing. But usually I bring a PA system with microphones and the whole thing, but it got left up in my house in Jamesville. So.
Want me to put this on?
I'll see what I can do.
I just was surprised that kind of.
I'm sorry. Oh, 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 boo. They can say what they want to say. Yeah.
Sorry, for some reason. You're hearing this noise?
No, that's the hearing. I'm just trying to get the right view. Okay. Great. Well, let's start, everybody. It's 2:00 PM. So I'm going to apologize one more time. I'm going to be shouting a little bit to make sure you guys can hear me. I forgot the microphones that I usually bring here, but if you have trouble hearing, please feel free to come to the front. Plenty of room, plenty of chairs up here. My name's Michael Newmark. Oh, we're off the roof. Yeah, sorry. My name's Michael Newmark. I'm the Administrative Law Judge for the Public Service Commission. The PSC, we call it, is the state agency that will reviews this application for a transmission line. We, we're the state agency that reviews it. We have the authority to deny, approve, or modify the application. So, so my job is to collect all the information that we use to make that decision, including public comments. We take all that information, we give it to the commissioners, three people who run the agency. And they meet in open meeting and they have to vote on all the issues in the case. Once they voted, they come up with an order deciding whether to, what to do with the application. So approve, modify, or deny. So, so it's the information that they use that's, that's critical. And part of that, like I said, is public comments. We've already been collecting the, the sort of expert testimony and the position of the parties that intervened in the case. We did that on August 19th. So we did that in Madison and on Zoom. There's actually a recording of that on our YouTube channel. If you want to go back and review that, there's a transcript of it as well. So that's where the parties got to make their presentation to the commissioners. And since June 25th, we've been taking public comment on the case. Where people could file a comment in writing, either online or by mailing it to us. We're also going through the project area this week and we're collecting comments live. So here today in Nukusa, tomorrow in Blair, and Thursday will be in Montello. So that's kind of a, the way the project winds around the state, we're going to try to hit locations that people can get to sort of conveniently, hopefully. So we can take comments live here, here today, or you can, you can actually file a written comment today just by writing out a comment and handing it back to us. Or you can, there's still opportunities to file a comment online or mail it in. So. So what you want to do, if you want, if you do want to comment today, you want to fill out what we call an appearance slip. And those are in the back. You met Allison in the back of the room there when, when you came in. So you want to fill out that and you want to check the box, speak now, yes, then I'll get your slip and I'll have it. Basically, we're just going to call out names and have you come up to the table. I'll swear you in, have you state your name for the record and just give us your opinion on the project. That's what we're here today to collect. If you don't feel like I said, if you don't feel like talking today, if you want to collect more information first, you can still file a written comment. Comments in writing are due September 8th. So we've been collecting it, starting that process since June 25th, and you have until September 8th, get your comment in. So the easiest way to do that is to file it online. But, and there's information on how to do that on the appearance slip. So grab one of those slips. It's got a QR code. It's got the link to our website. So you can just type your comment in and hit send and it gets to us. We also have a mailing address. If you just, if you want to mail your comment in. Important thing to note though is we need to have the comment with us at the commission by Monday, September 8th. So if you're mailing it, you got to think about the time to mail it in, get that done quickly. So. Yeah, but if you just want to fill out a form, you can, there's space in the back. You can write more. We can give you more pages. Just fill out your form and hand it back to us. We'll put that on the record as well. So everything will get scanned in. Everything I collected, I'll scan and put on our electronic record system. So that'll be on our website and the commissioners will read all those documents. So today, if you speak today, we're going to transcribe what you say. We have a court reporter here. So she's, she's copying what you're saying and the transcript will be what the commissioners read. Just a couple of ground rules about participating though, because she's trying to listen what people are saying when they're giving their comment. We just, we can't have any interruptions or other noises in the room. We want to make, give everyone the chance to give their comment to the commission. And so we need to be respectful and quiet in order to do that. I don't think there's going to be problems today about that, but it does happen on occasion, different places and go all over the state. So. So yeah, and just another note, I think Allison's been telling you guys that we're not really taking questions back, not having a back and forth conversation here. We're just here to collect your comments. If you do have questions about the project, I would suggest you talk, we have commission staff here and we have the applicant represented here. If you do have questions before you make your comment, get those questions answered and then you can bring your, your answer and your opinion about it to the, to the table here and tell us. So, so commission staff was, was in the back and we do have the ATCs here. Is NSP, is NSP here too? Yeah, you guys in the back row, okay. Right. So, so if you do have a question with, for them, we'll just take your conversation outside of this room and and we can, we can also give you some time to do that. It doesn't look like we have a big list of speakers, but we'll see if we, if we need to take a break just to regroup, see if anyone else wants to speak, we'll do that. I'm also taking comments on Zoom, so you'll see me kind of refereeing that as well. Just two people connected so far on Zoom. But forgive your comment and I'm not, not paying attention to you all the time. I apologize. But sometimes I do have to deal with the Zoom and the live stream and kind of the computer distracts me. But the important thing is that the court reporter is hearing what you say and that's what the commissioners will read. So. So I got four appearance slips. So four people are signed up to speak so far. Like I said, we can take those people and if more people want to speak, we can take a break and have you decide if you change your mind, you can do that. Let's start with Jeff Viper. You were number one. Do that first. Okay. So why don't you do that and we'll, we'll just put you on hold. Eric Rasmussen.
Have a seat here. We'll show you how it's done.
Yeah, I'll swear you in, raise your right hand, swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. All right. So give us your name. You're going to have to speak up. Apologize for that, but people want to hear what you say.
So my name is Eric Rasmussen.
Hang on just a sec. Excuse me, guys. Can, can you guys take that out? The other room. Thanks. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Again, my name is Eric Rasmussen. I'm requesting a minor site adjustment to avoid having power lines going directly over my home and barn. And also keep these buildings from being part of the easement. I'm requesting that a bump out be placed from the south side of County Road C to the north side of County Road C, east of the buildings at 8453 County Road C in Pittsville, Wisconsin. And to the west of the tree line at 8418 County Road C, Pittsville, Wisconsin. This would send, have the power line going from agricultural use land to agricultural use land to avoid going through residential buildings. I do have maps in here that kind of detail my proposal.
That's perfect. Okay. That's great. I can take those. I'll scan them in and the commissioners can see them. And I'll just put this together with your appearance slip. Okay. So that's great. That's, that's perfect information. That's why we're here to take this, take this from you. So it's, that's great. I appreciate you coming and, and giving us that. So let me, yeah, let me look and just make sure the map is clear here. So you have.
So this is the.
That actually is very clear. So you're, you're good. So you gave, you gave us a map with your, that has your name and, and your property is identified on there. So yeah, and the bump out is written in pen and it looks, and then a, and a zoom in with this. And that's the same, depicting the same area, this bump out here. So page two of, of your map. Okay. Yeah, I think that, that works great. So I appreciate that. Great. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Yeah, that's great. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right. Hey, let's have Steve Starpallas. Yes. You can do the questions first. Yes. Okay. We'll do that. All right. Alan Ginch. Saying that right? Yeah. You want to make a comment? Come on up. We'll do the same thing. I'll have a seat and swear you in. Swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes.
All right. Give us your name and comment.
My name is Alan Gant. I live on corner of Yetter Road and 73. And I would think the alternative route would be a better route to take because it affects a lot less people.
Okay.
And there's no, no people live along the railroad track along 54 and that. If you go down Park Road, there's very few people you'd affect that way and it'd be a better route for many people.
Okay, great. Thanks. Because if you couldn't hear me, you preferred the alternative route. That was his comment. I don't know if you could hear. So that's all I have in, for appearance lips, written appearance lips. I see we have a couple of people on Zoom. We'll start with Jerry. Let me get you set up here on the screen and then we'll swear you in and do the same. Got that right? Okay. So let's see. So Jerry, I'm going to swear you in and I'm going to have to, you're going to have to spell your name for us because we don't have an appearance slip for you. You can hear me? Okay.
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Raise your right hand. You swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes.
All right. So state and spell your name first, please.
Gerard Non, G E R A R D N O N N.
Okay, great. So go ahead with your comment.
Well, I did, I did send in a written note this morning via the website. So there's just a couple of things that, one is we would prefer the alternate route given the existing infrastructure as mentioned by the previous individual. There is transmission lines that go through there. There's railroad tracks. To me, it would seem much easier to use the existing route versus the route that comes directly by our property. Our property is a legacy home. And I didn't put in the note, but it's going to go right over the top of our house too. And I guess I didn't put anything in there about changing that. I was just hoping that the alternative route would be the better route and we wouldn't have to deal with it. But it goes right above between my house and the road. And just, you know, the concerns there. And then if it does become the specific option number one, I believe there's a whole set of trees that line my fence line that will probably have to be taken out. And I'm, I'm just very interested in what that would mean in terms of how people would maybe help us rebuild a fence there or what we would need to do there. But we're talking right on the fence line there, about probably 50 to 100 trees, very mature pine trees. So those are kind of my thoughts. Again, we're trying to catch up. I got all the infrastructure now set up on my phone so I can monitor and, you know, track and be more close to it. But, you know, initially it's just, you know, it goes right between the house and the road. And we have a windmill there and a bunch of trees. And it's just concerning to us because this is like the second generation family farm up there. We're just kind of trying to continue the legacy without having potential impacts to our grandchildren.
Okay, thanks. So I know you said you filled in a written comment, but can you just give us your, the address of the property you're talking about?
W 6053 Sherwood Road. And, and that's Nielsville, Wisconsin, 54456.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that's great. Thanks for your comment.
Thank you.
All right. Take care. So there's one more person online. Nathan Webster, did you want to comment? I see you there.
No, Your Honor, just observing. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Okay. So that's all the people I have at this point, but we will take a break and see. We do have Jeff and Steve possibly to make a comment unless you're ready to go. Let's help for the record. Jeff, are you ready for, for a comment now or?
Again, when I have a question to ask.
Oh, you didn't do it yet. Oh, I thought you went back.
No, I addressed it with that job.
Oh, so you're.
I think, yeah, it's about property access and things. The proposed primary, we've had a little bit of interruption in the past year, some preliminary work.
Okay. So no comment today. Okay, thanks. So we'll wait for Steve. Steve, I don't see him here. What we'll do is take about 10 minutes. Let's make it 15 minutes. We'll come back at 2:30 and we'll see if people want to make a comment again, if anyone else has joined us on Zoom. So I'll take a break until 2:30 and come back and see if there's anything else we can do for you guys.
I think, yeah, it's about property access and things, I'm on the, the proposed primary, we've had a little bit of interruption in the past year, some preliminary work.
Okay, so no comment today, okay, thanks. So we'll wait for Steve, um. Steve, I don't see him here. What we'll do is take about ten minutes, let's make it fifteen minutes, we'll come back at two thirty. And we'll see if people want to make a comment, again, if anyone else has joined us on Zoom. So I'll take a break until two thirty and come back and see if there's anything else we can do for you guys. I'm gonna turn off the audio. I don't know, I think like. We'll come. Well, yeah, it's pretty. I can wash. That's what I have. Give that a. Great, so. Well, straight from zero. All right, excuse me, everybody, just wanted to announce, we're still waiting for Steve to come back with his comment, so. I'm gonna hang out here until he's, until he's got his question answered, and then he can come make his comment. But um, besides that, unless someone else wishes to comment, we'll, we'll be done after that, so. So it's just, uh, Steve, uh. Sarpatas is gonna, is getting his question answered, and then he's gonna come back and make a comment for us. Um, I just wanted to note that for Jeff Pfeiffer, who had been signed up for a comment. He's the person who, at the end, said he didn't have a comment anymore, he got his question answered, and he didn't want to comment, so I just want to make sure we. We have that recorded, otherwise, we'll, we'll, I'll put in for another fifteen minutes of recess, and uh. If he's ready by then, we'll take his comment, if not, I'll, I'll be here, you guys don't have to stay if you don't want to, but. We're just waiting for Steve to be done, uh, getting his question answered, so. Okay? Yeah. Sorry. So there's one more person online, uh, Nathan Webster, did you want to comment, I see you there. No, your honor, just observing, thank you. Okay, so that's all the people I have at this point, uh, but we will take a break and see. We do have Jeff and Steve possibly to make a comment, um, unless you're ready to go. Uh, let's call for the record that. Jeff, are you ready for, for a comment now, or?
Again, when I have a big question to ask.
Oh, you didn't do it yet, oh, I thought you went back.
No, I addressed it with that job.
Oh, so you're.
I think, yeah, it's about property access and things, I'm on the, the proposed primary, we've had a little bit of interruption in the past year, some preliminary work.
Okay, so no comment today, okay, thanks. So we'll wait for Steve, um. Steve, I don't see him here. What we'll do is take about ten minutes, let's make it fifteen minutes, we'll come back at two thirty. And we'll see if people want to make a comment, again, if anyone else has joined us on Zoom. So I'll take a break until two thirty and come back and see if there's anything else we can do for you guys. I'm gonna turn off the audio. I don't know, I think like. We'll come. All right, excuse me, everybody, just wanted to announce, we're still waiting for Steve to come back with his comment, so. I'm gonna hang out here until he's, until he's got his question answered, and then he can come make his comment. But um, besides that, unless someone else wishes to comment, we'll, we'll be done after that, so. So it's just, uh, Steve, uh. Sarpatas is gonna, is getting his question answered, and then he's gonna come back and make a comment for us. Um, I just wanted to note that for Jeff Pfeiffer, who had been signed up for a comment. He's the person who, at the end, said he didn't have a comment anymore, he got his question answered, and he didn't want to comment, so I just want to make sure we. We have that recorded, otherwise, we'll, we'll, I'll put in for another fifteen minutes of recess, and uh. If he's ready by then, we'll take his comment, if not, I'll, I'll be here, you guys don't have to stay if you don't want to, but. We're just waiting for Steve to be done, uh, getting his question answered, so. Okay? Yeah. So there's one more person online, uh, Nathan Webster, did you want to comment, I see you there. Okay, so that's all the people I have at this point, uh, but we will take a break and see. We do have Jeff and Steve possibly to make a comment, um, unless you're ready to go. Uh, let's call for the record that. Jeff, are you ready for, for a comment now, or?
Again, when I have a big question to ask.
Oh, you didn't do it yet, oh, I thought you went back.
No, I addressed it with that job.
Oh, so you're.
I think, yeah, it's about property access and things, I'm on the, the proposed primary, we've had a little bit of interruption in the past year, some preliminary work.
Okay, so no comment today, okay, thanks. So we'll wait for Steve, um. Steve, I don't see him here. What we'll do is take about ten minutes, let's make it fifteen minutes, we'll come back at two thirty. And we'll see if people want to make a comment, again, if anyone else has joined us on Zoom. So I'll take a break until two thirty and come back and see if there's anything else we can do for you guys. I'm gonna turn off the audio. I don't know, I think like. We'll come. All right, excuse me, everybody, just wanted to announce, we're still waiting for Steve to come back with his comment, so. I'm gonna hang out here until he's, until he's got his question answered, and then he can come make his comment. But um, besides that, unless someone else wishes to comment, we'll, we'll be done after that, so. So it's just, uh, Steve, uh. Sarpatas is gonna, is getting his question answered, and then he's gonna come back and make a comment for us. Um, I just wanted to note that for Jeff Pfeiffer, who had been signed up for a comment. He's the person who, at the end, said he didn't have a comment anymore, he got his question answered, and he didn't want to comment, so I just want to make sure we. We have that recorded, otherwise, we'll, we'll, I'll put in for another fifteen minutes of recess, and uh. If he's ready by then, we'll take his comment, if not, I'll, I'll be here, you guys don't have to stay if you don't want to, but. We're just waiting for Steve to be done, uh, getting his question answered, so. Okay? Yeah. So there's one more person online, uh, Nathan Webster, did you want to comment, I see you there. Okay, so that's all the people I have at this point, uh, but we will take a break and see. We do have Jeff and Steve possibly to make a comment, um, unless you're ready to go. Uh, let's call for the record that. Jeff, are you ready for, for a comment now, or?
Again, when I have a big question to ask.
Oh, you didn't do it yet, oh, I thought you went back.
No, I addressed it with that job.
Oh, so you're.
I think, yeah, it's about property access and things, I'm on the, the proposed primary, we've had a little bit of interruption in the past year, some preliminary work.
Okay, so no comment today, okay, thanks. So we'll wait for Steve, um. Steve, I don't see him here. What we'll do is take about ten minutes, let's make it fifteen minutes, we'll come back at two thirty. And we'll see if people want to make a comment, again, if anyone else has joined us on Zoom. So I'll take a break until two thirty and come back and see if there's anything else we can do for you guys. I'm gonna turn off the audio. I don't know, I think like. We'll come. All right, excuse me, everybody, just wanted to announce, we're still waiting for Steve to come back with his comment, so. I'm gonna hang out here until he's, until he's got his question answered, and then he can come make his comment. But um, besides that, unless someone else wishes to comment, we'll, we'll be done after that, so. So it's just, uh, Steve, uh. Sarpatas is gonna, is getting his question answered, and then he's gonna come back and make a comment for us. Um, I just wanted to note that for Jeff Pfeiffer, who had been signed up for a comment. He's the person who, at the end, said he didn't have a comment anymore, he got his question answered, and he didn't want to comment, so I just want to make sure we. We have that recorded, otherwise, we'll, we'll, I'll put in for another fifteen minutes of recess, and uh. If he's ready by then, we'll take his comment, if not, I'll, I'll be here, you guys don't have to stay if you don't want to, but. We're just waiting for Steve to be done, uh, getting his question answered, so. Okay? Yeah. So there's one more person online, uh, Nathan Webster, did you want to comment, I see you there. Okay, so that's all the people I have at this point, uh, but we will take a break and see. We do have Jeff and Steve possibly to make a comment, um, unless you're ready to go. Uh, let's call for the record that. Jeff, are you ready for, for a comment now, or?
Again, when I have a big question to ask.
Oh, you didn't do it yet, oh, I thought you went back.
No, I addressed it with that job.
Oh, so you're.
I think, yeah, it's about property access and things, I'm on the, the proposed primary, we've had a little bit of interruption in the past year, some preliminary work.
Okay, so no comment today, okay, thanks. So we'll wait for Steve, um. Steve, I don't see him here. What we'll do is take about ten minutes, let's make it fifteen minutes, we'll come back at two thirty. And we'll see if people want to make a comment, again, if anyone else has joined us on Zoom. So I'll take a break until two thirty and come back and see if there's anything else we can do for you guys. I'm gonna turn off the audio. I don't know, I think like. We'll come. All right, excuse me, everybody, just wanted to announce, we're still waiting for Steve to come back with his comment, so. I'm gonna hang out here until he's, until he's got his question answered, and then he can come make his comment. But um, besides that, unless someone else wishes to comment, we'll, we'll be done after that, so. So it's just, uh, Steve, uh. Sarpatas is gonna, is getting his question answered, and then he's gonna come back and make a comment for us. Um, I just wanted to note that for Jeff Pfeiffer, who had been signed up for a comment. He's the person who, at the end, said he didn't have a comment anymore, he got his question answered, and he didn't want to comment, so I just want to make sure we.
And you can't do anything on it. We can't build on it. The only thing we get to do is mow grass and pay taxes on it. Um it just doesn't seem fair that you have to pay tax on something that's unusable and you go to sell it, it's gonna be worth you know, not much, because you can't do anything with it. Now, it's contiguous between his properties and my properties, so yes, we want to own all of it, but but it's just you know, doesn't seem fair. It's gonna get quite close to his house now, I believe. And uh the other concern is I'm worried about uh deer habitat. Are they gonna cross this wide of an opening as easily? Is it gonna change all the trails and uh mess with the hunting? Um I mean, that, we get it. You gotta put power to everybody, but just concerns.
Okay, uh did you want to give us the location of the property that you're concerned about?
It's uh right off of Sand Lake Road in um Plover. We're Shore County, but we're Plainfield. We keep calling it Hancock House because it's next to Hancock, but it's in Plainfield.
Okay, the Sa- Sand Lake Road.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's where it cuts through the Sand Lake Road.
Okay, so, so did you, was there anything that you got uh from your discussion that you wanted to talk about?
Well, yeah, we're worried about what they're gonna do with the trees because we've had other power companies do other stuff on properties, where they just push the stuff into a pile and leave it. And they said they're gonna chip it, take it away. You can sell the wood if you want to, stuff like that. Also, uh I do have hunting blinds and stuff on the edge of the right of way now and that they're gonna be in the right of way. He said that they would pay to move them. They have them moved and stuff, so hopefully they'll be viable there anyway, but we'll see. Have to move those. They didn't have any answers on deer habitat that they could find right away.
Right.
So we'd have to look at the environmental study thing and see if that has anything to do with it. But um other than that, I don't know. Good luck. Hopefully it works out for everybody.
All right. Well, thank you for coming. Anyone else in the room wish to comment that hasn't done so? No? Okay, and we have no one new on Zoom, so we're gonna close it out now. We'll adjourn and we'll reconvene at six PM. So we'll be back here at six to take new comments from new people. Also, the Zoom connection, we'll have that going up, up as well. Um and don't forget, we'll also be in uh Blair tomorrow and Montello on Thursday, so we'll do the same process over there. Well, thanks for, thanks everyone for attending. Appreciate your comments and take care. We're adjourned.
Thank you, your honor. Have a great day.
Bye-bye.